Of course. The provisions do apply to China Palace.
Nothing's easy.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Let me ask the city clerk for the roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, is our closed session report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session to discuss the matters that are reflected on the open session agenda, specifically with respect to the Montalvo versus City of Newport Beach case. The council voted seven zero to authorize the defense of the matter to the office of the city attorney and/or outside counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the audience please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Don Webb, and remain standing for the invocation, which will be led by Reverend Peter Haynes of St. Michael and All Angels Episcopal Church?
Please join me in the pledge to our great flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do invite you into prayer. Wondrous God, fountain of life and source of goodness, you have made all that is and given us all we have. We are grateful and thank you for the people of this beautiful place and for able and responsible leaders in the mutual regard which forms our civic life. Give us, we pray, your spirit of peace, justice, charity, wisdom, humor, and grace that we may find with one another the fulfillment of our humanity here in this lovely city. For you are gracious, great lover of souls, and to you we give honor and glory now and forever.
Amen. Please be seated. The first item on the agenda is a presentation on the 1-1 Marines Foundation upcoming events. Do we have a presentation on that? Christina here? All right, we will skip that. Perhaps she'll show up a little bit later in the day, but there is a mess night coming up in January and some other events to support the adopted Marines from Newport Beach, the 1-1, who have been on maneuvers, and we hope to have them back in safe sway in the near future. Notice to the public, Madam City Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, some of you may have been following the story of the possibility of the back nine of the Newport Beach golf course, which is up there by Bristol, the possibility of that land use being converted to something to complement the airport, such as a parking lot. And I have news to report that today at the Orange County Board of Supervisors, that supervisors did vote to extend the lease for 10 years to the golf course. So that's very good news for golfers, and it's also very good news for the geopolitics of the city, given that golf course is proximity to the airport. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Webb.
Nothing.
Councilmember Selich.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Hen.
I have nothing.
I would like to report on just a couple of things. First of all, along with my colleagues, we were present Saturday for the dedication of the Upper Bay, the completion of the Upper Bay dredging project, along with Congressman Royce and Senator Feinstein, whom we thank for their support of our city to finish this very important project, to keep the bay dredged for another 20 years, 21 years, in the Upper Bay, and we're now ready to commence lower bay dredging. It's a very, very important milestone for our city. We certainly appreciate the support of our friends in Washington to make that possible. Today, I dedicated a new boat, Oasis Five, as part of the fleet for the Oasis Senior Center. We have a very active sailing program at Oasis and some excellent vessels. I understand that this vessel has been committed for 28 out of the 30 days in November for people to use it, so it's getting a tremendous amount of use. And if you're a member of Oasis, I encourage you to take advantage of the many programs that are offered there, including the sailing program with this new and great-looking vessel. And then finally, today is Arbor Day, and I had the privilege of speaking at a ceremony, actually, it's in February, but we celebrated it today because we had a ceremony at Mariners School. It may surprise some of you to know that the City of Newport Beach has over 34,000 city trees, that these trees have an approximate value of about $80 million. And for the past 20 years, Newport Beach has been named as a tree city, and indeed, for the last 15 years, we have been a recipient of the Growth Award, which represents excellence in the management of our trees and our city tree program. So I was pleased to pick this award up on behalf of the city, and it recognizes the great job that our city staff does in keeping the city looking beautiful through the many 34,000, to be precise, trees that we have in our community. So with that, consent calendar.
All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 9 and supplemental item 15 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have any items to like to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Selich.
I don't want to pull anything, but I've got a question for the city attorney on D6. I have a residential peer. Do I have a conflict in voting on that item?
You do not. In this circumstances, there's a surface fees, and you are amongst the public generally, a large class of citizens that are being affected the same, and it's an overall effect for the harbor, so you do not have to recuse yourself.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hen.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Daigle.
None.
Councilmember Gardner.
I have a correction on the minutes. On the first page, paragraph three, we talk about a buffer zone for invasive species. It's actually invasive. They're plants, and they can't evade anything.
Mr. Webb.
None.
And I have no items. Staff, you have any items to pull?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Does any member of the public have any item on the consent calendar they would like to pull for discussion? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion?
We do, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve items, consent calendar items, 1 through 9, plus supplemental item number 15.
Okay, second?
Second.
Please vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With Councilmember Rosansky absent, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item is all reports on committee activities. Mr. Selich.
I have no reports tonight.
Mr. Hen.
Just two reports. The Finance Committee met yesterday. Yesterday. Regarding, with just one agenda item, which is the issuance of bonds in support of the financing of the Civic Center project. We went through the presentation that you'll see tonight and made some comments and assured ourselves with some detailed questioning with staff that we're on the right track here and that this is a good decision for the city, and you'll hear more about that tonight. And then the Economic Development Committee met, this will be a couple of weeks now ago, and had a presentation from an entity called OPIS 100. That's O-P-I-S-100, which is a consulting group that does workshops for municipalities around the state, helping businesses, small businesses, understand how to be more successful in this very challenging environment. And we've concluded we do want to go forward with this program whereby at the first meeting, it's for free, and if you choose to join, then you would need to pay a $100 deposit, which, if you attend the remaining three workshops and the four teleconference workshops, will be refunded to you. We think it's a terrific opportunity to support the business community here in Newport Beach, which is under pressure like everywhere else, to help improve the chance for success in this very challenging environment. I believe that first meeting is to be held on January the 22nd, beginning at 8:30 in the morning at our new Oasis Center meeting room. So I would invite everyone who feels they have a need to improve their business to come and tend and see what it's all about, and hopefully we'll find a way to help you do better. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Deick.
No reports.
Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Webb.
None.
And I have none. We'll now move on to item number 10, public hearings, adoption of the 2010 California Building Codes.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, you did hear a fairly detailed presentation of this in study session. We're happy to restate any of that or all of that, if you'd like, if you would rather pass. The recommendation that we are making is to move certain items to, actually, I'll let Joel chime in. Joel Fick, the interim Community Development Director, move certain items to a future agenda, but adopt some tonight. So with that, Joel.
That is correct, Dave. This afternoon, you did receive a detailed presentation concerning the building and fire code process and adoption and issues. And based upon the input that we received since the initial release of the report, we did suggest at the workshop earlier today and are continuing to suggest this evening that you introduce an ordinance to adopt the state mandated provisions of the building and fire codes, along with the local amendments that are non-substantive, that are editorial in nature, and with one added provision that we earlier referenced as 1A in the handout, that would continue the prohibition of wood roofs within the high-fire-hazard severity zones. We do plan on holding a public workshop and any follow-up contacts or meetings that are necessary to seek input from designers, architects, our citizens, the BIA, and any other interested parties, and so that we can receive comments, make any adjustments as necessary, and then report back to city council. And we do plan on incorporating a public process like this in the next three-year cycle that we have as well. And we, as mentioned by the city manager, were certainly available to answer any questions or go through any portions of the process if you would like.
Thank you, Joel. That was a very comprehensive report this afternoon. Mr. Selich.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Are you combining 10 and 11 together in one hearing?
I think we can do that. Let me also then open the hearing here on item 11, which is a complimentary item relative to the fire code and the international fire code adoption as well.
May I move the recommended action on 10 and 11?
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on either agenda item 10 or 11? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, please vote.
With Councilmember Rosansky absent, the motion carries.
All right, the next item is item 12, which is the China Palace Use Permit. And I think... Let's commence the staff report on that.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as noted, this use permit relates to the China Palace Restaurant, 2800 West Coast Highway. This is a public hearing where you're considering a use permit that includes live entertainment and dancing. Jim Campbell is here to make the presentation, to be assisted by McKenna Nova. We're probably catching you a little early because we're moving fairly quickly through things, so.
Yes.
Have I stalled enough for you?
I don't have my PowerPoint up yet. I apologize for that, but I'll start.
Excuse me? You know, I've been talking with the applicant about this outside, and I think they'd like to continue this matter for another couple of weeks, so there's no point in really having...
Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second.
You have time, sir, Mr. Rosansky?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a date?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? To the next meeting in November, okay? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on the motion to continue this item for two weeks? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, item 13 is the annual review of the development agreement with Sober Living by the Sea.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the next public hearing involves the annual review of the development agreement with Sober Living by the Sea. The agreement that the city executed with Sober Living by the Sea does require this annual review process at a public hearing. Staff will make a presentation, it'll probably be the city attorney, or Janet. It'll be Associate Planner Janet Brown making the presentation. This does allow time for public comment, and then at the end, there's a finding suggested by staff to find that the applicant has demonstrated good faith compliance with all but one term of the zoning agreement, and then establish some milestones to address that term. So with that, Janet.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the first annual review of the zoning agreement between the city and Sober Living by the Sea to determine if Sober Living has demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the agreement.
They're checking in the video room. This is not real compelling television for the people watching at home, I understand.
We need Diane.
We need somebody. All right, let's go without the PowerPoint, please.
As stated, this is the first annual review of the zoning agreement between the city and Sober Living to determine if Sober Living has demonstrated good faith compliance. Staff has conducted an extensive review of Sober Living's operations, and through the review process with Sober Living, we've established a mutually agreed upon administrative protocol. This is related to city inspections of facilities, the opening or relocation of facilities, and future annual compliance reviews. The zoning agreement provides that the city and Sober Living shall conduct a review for good faith compliance at least once every 12 months from the effective date of the agreement. Per the zoning agreement, the effective date is 91 days following the adoption of the ordinance approved by city council, which would be May 12, 2009. However, the zoning agreement was not fully executed until September 30, 2009. So due to this ambiguity between the effective date and the date of execution, the city and Sober Living agreed to conduct future annual reviews in July of each year since this falls between the two dates. The zoning agreement establishes a number of regulations related to the operations of Sober Living facilities and licensed treatment facilities in the city. The agreement sets a limit on the number of client beds allowed in the city to a maximum of 204 client beds citywide. 156 client beds may be located in the peninsula zone with no more than 12 beds on Lido Isle. An additional 48 client beds are allowed outside of the peninsula zone in the MFR district. In order to determine compliance with the terms of the agreement, the Code Enforcement Division has conducted several inspections in April, July, and September of this year. During these inspections, Code Enforcement confirms the location of the facilities, the number of client beds and bedrooms, compliance with off-street parking requirements, compliance with proper storage of trash receptacles, and the disposal of medical waste. And they also take a look at the overall cleanliness of the facility grounds to make sure that there is no cigarette butts or debris laying around on the grounds. Sober Living was found to be in compliance during these inspections with the exceptions of the improper use of a bedroom at the Lido Isle facility and garage spaces that were not clear for parking at that same location. They also found, Code Enforcement also found improper techniques for the disposal of medical waste at a Seashore Drive facility and a Patrice Road facility, and the improper placement and maintenance of trash receptacles at four facilities located on 29th Street, Seashore Drive, and River Avenue. In each case, Sober Living was notified of these non-compliant matters and took appropriate actions to correct the situation. Code Enforcement Division also reviewed complaints received by the city during the past year. There were four complaints that were submitted, which involved resident smoking outside and intrusive behavior to passersby on the Lido Isle facility, secondhand smoke that was detected off a property at a Seashore Drive facility, excessive noise, congregation and smoking at the Villaway Office and Meeting Facility, and a transport van's failure to stop and cellphone use while driving. All of these complaints were brought to the attention of the Sober Living staff, and no subsequent complaints have been received regarding these issues. The zoning agreement establishes and maintains, requires that Sober Living establish and maintain a 24-hour hotline to which persons may call and register a complaint regarding the operations of the facilities. The hotline number is area code 949-554-1147. Also, if a person wishes to register a complaint with the city's Code Enforcement Division, they may do so by calling Under the zoning agreement, Sober Living is required to move or disperse some of its facilities so that there are no more than one facility per block or across a bordering street that is occupied by Sober Living or another facility operator. Sober Living has complied with this provision and has closed all but one of its facilities subject to dispersal. This facility, which is located at 4816 Seashore Drive, is scheduled to relocate on or before December 30 of this year. Today, based on the information provided by Sober Living and confirmed by our Code Enforcement staff, Sober Living operates 18 facilities, providing a total of 94 client beds in the city. I have a map that shows the location of the facilities. I'll pass on that. Of the facilities that are currently opened, one new facility was opened in August of this year at Patrice Road, 4138 Patrice Road. This property is located in the MFR district, outside of the peninsula zone, and houses six or fewer female clients. Its state ADP license is currently pending. Because the facility opened prior to the final dispersal dates required under the zoning agreement, it was opened in violation with the terms of the agreement. agreement, it was opened in violation with the terms of the agreement. However, the facility is located in the MFR district, as would be required under the terms of the zoning agreement. In addition, because the facility opened while Sober Living was in the process of completing its final dispersal, and it meets all the requirements of the zoning agreement for dispersal, staff views that the opening of this facility is generally consistent with the terms and provisions and intent of the zoning agreement. The Sober Living Office and Meeting Facility located at 2811 Villa Way is also subject to operational conditions of the agreement. These conditions are established in a determination letter issued by the Planning Director in August of 2006 and incorporated in the agreement. The determination letter establishes the number of meetings that may be held at the facility to an average of 10 meetings per week, with no more than 12 meetings in any one week, and attendee by no more than 20 persons. Based on the attendance logs provided by Sober Living, it appears that they are in compliance with this requirement. The determination letter also requires that Sober Living must establish and construct a 13-space off-site parking lot across the street from the Villa Way site. Sober Living does not own this property, but they have entered into a lease agreement with the property owner, or at least reached an agreement with the property owner to lease the site. They've made certain improvements to the public rights of ways surrounding the site, and they obtained building permits from the city to construct the lot. However, after numerous attempts to obtain cooperation from the property owner, Sober Living was unable to reach an agreement regarding the environmental cleanup of the site, and the building permits expired in April of this year. For these reasons, Sober Living is not in compliance with the requirement to provide the off-site parking lot for the Villa Way facility. However, staff proposes that the following schedule or milestones to bring Sober Living into compliance with this requirement would be to allow two months for Sober Living to work with the property owner, to reach a resolution on the environmental cleanup of the site, and begin construction of the parking lot. Or if they cannot make material progress, we would suggest that Sober Living be allowed to use the next two to four months to seek alternative locations for an off-site lot and enter into an agreement. In conclusion, staff recommends that council find Sober Living has demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the agreement, accept the requirement for the parking lot, accept the proposed milestones to bring Sober Living into compliance with the parking lot requirement, and staff recommends that council receive and file the documents submitted by Sober Living demonstrating their good faith compliance for the period of October 09 through September of this year. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Mr. Hen?
Yeah, I have a question with regard to this letter of protocol for the city attorney here. Have they in fact accepted that letter of protocol? It wasn't clear to me from the staff report that they have accepted it.
They have. They have accepted it. We've met with their attorney, and we've worked through the issues, and they have accepted the protocol.
Which brings the protocol in, much closer into alignment with the protocols in the Morningside Agreement, is that correct?
Yes, it does. It addresses the issue, we have a number of different issues that arose in the negotiation of the Morningside Agreement, in which the Sober Living by the Sea agreement did not have the practical provisions that we were able to negotiate into the Morningside Agreement. In doing the zoning agreement review of these last two months, we were able to work with Sober Living to address some of those issues, one of which is, deals with, well, a couple of the most important ones deal with notice regarding inspection. They came into compliance and agreed to a notice similar, or exactly the same as what we have under the Morningside Agreement.
Which is?
Two to four hours, not, you know, not in, not less than two, reasonable notice within two to four hours of actual inspection. Before the Sober Living by the Sea agreement actually had more of a 24-hour provision of notice, and they've agreed that this, the provisions under Morningside were adequate. We also addressed the issue of beds occupied versus client beds. While we've not amended the agreement, and frankly, I don't recommend an amendment of the agreement itself, they have understood and recognized that we will be going by a criteria of client beds, which is an objective count of the actual number of beds available for clients in any of their, any of their facilities. That's how we've conducted our inspections, and that's what they've agreed to accept as our approach to identifying compliance.
And implicit within that, though, is a limit on the number of clients, is what?
Yes, they, so the client beds need to be within their cap, and that is implicit that they cannot have a census or a number of clients in excess of that. So it provides us with an objective means of addressing that issue, and we investigate further if the numbers are off to determine whether or not they've actually stayed within their cap of beds occupied. The other issue that's been resolved relates to the actual effective date and to the annualized review of the development agreement. The nuance of how this particular development agreement was ultimately entered into called the effective date somewhat into some ambiguity. So it could have been anywhere between May 12 to September 30, when we were going to do the annual review. It was decided that the most effective time to do it would actually be in July, in light of splitting those two dates, and also since that's the month after their second, well, their annual, their biannual report on the status of their facilities. So we will be coming back to you in eight months with respect to the second annual review. That provides us the opportunity to address also their lack of compliance, albeit they tried really hard, they just couldn't come into compliance regarding the parking lot. So we'll be focusing efforts there to bring them in compliance on that issue.
With regard to the compliance reporting, are they also certifying the accuracy of the compliance reporting? Is that a change?
One of the things, yes, they had a change. The former, the exhibit of the actual zoning agreement that was entered into was simply that they needed to report the number of beds occupied in clients, and without any certification, unlike the Morningside Agreement, in which the Morningside certified compliance with all operating conditions of the zoning agreement. Sober Living by the Sea agreed that it was in their best interest, as well as the city's, that they make an affirmative statement as to their compliance. So they've agreed to a change of the exhibit to the zoning agreement, so they're certifying with, with each biannual report that they have complied with the zoning agreement. We are then entitled to inspect pursuant to the provisions of the zoning agreement to assure compliance, but they make the commitment with a signature of one of their operating officers that they have complied.
Okay. Were there any other changes of significance than in that protocol letter?
I can't think of any off the top of my head, but I see Ms. Walcott is looking at the list.
I guess about the only difference remaining is that the Morningside protocol requires quarterly compliance reporting, but we're still semi-annual with...
Correct, Morningside is a quarterly reporting. It is still semi-annual for Sober Living by the Sea.
Okay. I guess I just have one further comment. I'm really tired of hearing about this parking lot problem. We need to make sure that this issue is resolved 100% by the time we get to this next compliance review.
And absolutely, staff is committed to that effort, and I will tell you, one, that we've met twice with Sober Living by the Sea representatives at least, and that they cooperated in this investigation, well, in the inspection and review. They produce substantial documents that show their efforts to cooperate with the landlord in order to get that to occur. They've actually made a significant investment in that site, even not being able to turn it all into parking. We hope that perhaps we can work with them to resolve this issue quickly and have it resolved before we come back to you for the second annual review in July of next year.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Just looking at the, one of the matrix, a matrix on page four, we talk about the improper disposal of medical waste. Did we go back and check afterwards to make sure that there was compliance, or we just take their word for it, or how was that handled?
Code Enforcement did not go back and re-inspect. We addressed it directly with Sober Living by the Sea staff. They submitted an excerpt from their standard book of policies and protocol, which stated their preferred method, which was the city's preferred method as well. And they informed us by email that they had met with staff and conducted, you know, retraining on what their preferred method was.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions from council, is there a representative from Sober Living by the Sea who would like to speak as sort of the subject of this agreement first, and then we'll have public comment?
My name is Edward Dilks, I'm an attorney and represent Sober Living by the Sea. Kathy Sylvia is the Executive Director of the facilities that are subject to this review. We had no presentation to make, but would be happy to remain available for questions.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you. Let me open it up now to the public for comments, three minutes, please. We have a big crowd today, so we want to make sure we hear everybody, so please come forward, state your name. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Harris, and I've lived on Lido Island for almost 40 years. In the spirit of being a good neighbor, a good citizen, and a good human being, I make the following comments. As you know, in the late 1960s, California led the way in institutionalizing persons in need of care. The philosophy was that living in the community maximizes a person's ability to function better, get well, and to the greatest extent possible, live a normal, productive life. It also saves a great deal of money for the taxpayer. To provide places to live, the board and care and recovery homes came into being. It was obviously early in these, early that these homes should be licensed, and it also became obvious that the NIMBY, not in my backyard, was all too common a reaction. To meet the need, legislation was passed allowing homes for six and under to be established in R1 zones. Larger facilities must still meet city zoning regulations. I was at that time the Executive Director of the Orange County Association for Mental Health, helping to draft the bill and advocating for its passage. There were many years when Costa Mesa, Santa Ana, and many other cities were bearing the load for these needed homes. They complained regularly that they were providing the service to persons from Newport Beach, when Newport Beach had no such homes. I was pleased to hear while watching your last meeting on TV, that I believe it was the city attorney who pointed out that we still have many fewer beds than our neighboring cities. At my recent 60th reunion class at Stanford, I learned that the future will bring need for many more such resources due to our aging populations, living longer, and with that, the increase in Alzheimer's and other developments. It well may be that persons in this room tonight will need this kind of resource in their future. I greatly prize living in Newport Beach, where I've come my whole life, and on Lido Island, where I live now. I understand that our citizens are not immune from having problems, and well may need this kind of resource. On October 30 of 1982, our son, who had graduated from Harbor High, who had made numerous rescues as a Newport lifeguard in the summertime, who was a recent graduate of UCSD, who was attending computer school, learning in emergency technology, was a passenger in a car hit head-on by a vehicle that crossed the Centromedian, driven by a teenage boy eating a taco and drinking beer, killing the driver of the car our son was in, and causing such a brain injury to our son as to render him completely disabled. After over three years hospitalization, he was able to live in a board and care facility for head injures, injured people, in Escondido, the only one in the nation at that time. He was there 15 and a half years before needing nursing care, and he's in a nursing care home at this point in time. I believe that we should not cluster board and care homes or recovery homes. The whole philosophy of community care is to establish a more normal kind of living environment.
Ma'am, your time is expired.
Is my time up?
Thank you.
Thank you, and I have a more full version I'd like to leave for the members.
Leave it with the city manager, he'll make sure he gets to council. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, so are there other members of the public who would like to speak? The issue on the table today is the renewal, is the review of the Sober Living by the Sea development agreement. Mr. Williams?
That was my question. This is public comments for the Sober Living only, right?
Correct. If you want to talk about Morningside or other things, that's coming up later.
Next, okay.
Okay.
Bob Rush, 20-year resident, 25-year resident. I'd like to thank Mr. Hunt and Mr. Hen for the addition of the protocols. I think it's necessary, something that we needed from the onset. I'm glad that we had somebody like Mr. Hunt to finish it up. I do have a concern, though. Mr. Hunt stated earlier that he doesn't want to amend the original development agreement. And I have a concern about that in that the original development agreement has tremendously easy access, excuse me, tremendously easy transferability from one party to the next. This contract can be sold, bought and sold on a daily basis, 365 days a year for the next 25 years, with little or no approval rights by the city as to who holds that contract. So we could actually have a holder of the contract known to be an outright violator of law of other development agreements, and we have no ability to stop that transfer. Now, the protocols are nice that it's agreed to by both parties, but it's not formally agreed. It's not a formal agreement. I see no agreement in all the package of exhibits. And I question whether, upon transferability, whether those protocols will apply to the next party. And I don't know that there's any language in the development agreement that immediately attaches those protocols to the agreement. And with, with the absence of that language attaching the protocols, I think the protocols would have to be reestablished upon transfer. Now, this is not really critical today, because I don't think Sober Living is looking to transfer this today, but in five years, 10 years, when their population goes from 100 to 200, to 200-plus, there's going to be pressure, and there's going to be opportunity to sell that contract, just like any other asset, just like any other long-range, long-term contract. So I do believe that you may not want to amend the contract, but I do believe that we need to amend it, or at least create a secondary contract binding the parties to the protocols, and thereby acknowledging also in that agreement that the protocols apply to the original contract. Something has to be done, because those protocols will not transfer. And I'd like, at least at the conclusion of this discussion, at least an acknowledgement one way or the other, whether Mr. Hunt agrees with me or not.
Thank you, Mr. Rush.
Thank you.
Other speakers on the Sober Living by the Sea matter? Please come forward.
Denise Oberman, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have two quick items. One is to direct, to, may I direct to Sober Living by the Sea, just for a point of confirmation? The facility with addresses at 100, 102 Anteeps, 208 Viola Lido Sut, is still listed by the ADP as being a location operated by Sober Living by the Sea. It is, I looked today, so you may want to just get it cleared up. And secondly, I would just want to get as a point of clarification and confirmation from the city that in fact, there is one facility on Lido that was occupied by Sober Living by the Sea, and that facility being addressed as a look, as addresses in the aggregate of 100 and 102 Anteeps and 208 Viola Lido Sut. That's one facility, it was one facility with one manager. I'd just like to get clarification and confirmation as to that.
Thank you, Ms. Oberman. Mr. Hunt will respond to the questions as appropriate at the, at the end here. Please come forward.
Hi, Cindy Kohler, West Newport. I just have a question real quick here on 4500 and 4504 Seashore. It says that Sober Living by the Sea is going to take 4500, 4800, and 50529. They're currently approved as houses that can receive probationers. And it says that they're going to take 4500 Seashore and give that up. What about 4800 Seashore and 505 Seashore? Are they still going to house probationers? First question. And then, when it comes to doing the determination for the city, when we do these inspections, who is it that, who is it that goes to these homes? Who is it that determines if they're, if they're following the protocol? Who is it in the city that we would contact, we would discuss these issues with as residents? And who makes the determination that they are following the protocol at that point? So if someone could answer that for me, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Other speakers?
My name is Dennis Keough, and I do have a concern. Given the biohazard waste disposal issue and the potential harm that can flow from that, I'm not reassured as a citizen that an email was presented as, as compliance. And that is, that is troubling. And the second aspect that concerns me is the mention of the hotlines that Sober Living has provided, and how widely dispersed in the community is the existence of this hotline. And the fact that there were four complaints is, is interesting, but it would be, it would be helpful if the hotline's existence was, was circulated into the community to people affected by the community.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Mr. Hunt, would you like to respond to some of the points that were raised?
Just briefly, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I agree with Mr. Rush. I was not addressing the issue of transferability when discussing the issue of amendment. I was not addressing the issue of transferability when discussing the issue of amendment. He is correct that if, if the agreement were transferred, then the protocol wouldn't necessarily transfer with the agreement. My purpose of not seeking an amendment at this stage is sort of like, I don't want to join Pandora in opening the wrong box. If something's working, which this is in my opinion, I don't want to kick up the wrong dust at this stage. I could certainly talk to Sober Living by the Sea, but this was a difficult agreement to negotiate, and at this point, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, is my approach. But I can certainly talk to Sober Living by the Sea on that issue.
But on that point, it might also be possible, though, to have a separate document that they would sign that would address that issue that could have binding effect.
That's a possibility as well, and I'll approach Sober Living by the Sea. I would point out they've been good, cooperative in responding to all of our concerns to date, and so they may be willing to consider that. An agreement of this nature can be difficult to amend based upon the nature of the agreement in and of itself, being adopted by an ordinance, et cetera.
But the other edge of that sword is if, if they are willing to comply, then why wouldn't they be willing to so-state, I guess, on a separate document that would not be characterized as an amendment to the agreement?
We can approach Sober Living by the Sea, and, and they may want to comment on it since they're right here today.
I know, I'm looking right past you.
I thought you might be. Yes, the Viadantiebs residence is a triplex, and it was under the zoning agreement treated as one facility, so, Ms. Oberman, that's confirmed. I don't have the answer on probationers, but I think the most important issue on probationers is, is that they were in compliance with all of our requirements, both under the zoning agreement and under our code. They don't, in discussions with them, they don't market to probationers, but they do have the capability of doing so, having them in facilities. And if Ms. Brown needs to correct me on anything, I'd appreciate it. Who inspects the contracts? Matt Cozy Lyon is our senior code enforcement officer. Matt has been doing yeoman's labor in this area. His initial investigation and inspections are what conducted. Based upon his reports, we work together, staff. You have a team of about four individuals that are particularly involved in these issues. Matt Cozy Lyon, Janet Brown, Kathy Walcott, and myself, and Kyle Rowan of my office also, who's predominantly handles our code enforcement and, in, in the city attorney's office is involved. We make those determinations together based upon Mr. Cozy Lyon's investigation. And I apologize to the public on the issue of medical waste. That's an artful way of saying something that deals with, if you read Sober Living's letter, it's a little less artfully framed. It's, it's not biohazard, it is...
Is it pee-pee?
Yes.
Okay.
If it was biohazard waste, if it was something that presented a significant risk to the, to the community in any way, shape, or form, then of course, we would follow up more, more aggressively. But we used a term that could create more fear than just alleviating, you know, the, the difficulty of saying the words. So, and the hotline is published, I believe, on our website, and we were going to have a big picture on our screen showing the hotline, but our PowerPoint failed, and so we'll make sure that's available to everyone, that we can get available to them.
Thank you. Let me bring it back to the council. Any other questions, or is it a motion on this item?
I move the recommended action.
Second.
Motion and second on the recommended action. Further discussion, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We're now open for public comments on matters not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on matters not on the agenda, please come forward. Three minutes, three minutes. Good evening, Mr. Longyear, three minutes tonight.
Thank you. Dear Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Willis Longyear, I'm a resident on Lido Isle. I'm here to question the city's rationale for allowing location of two drug, two drug rehab facilities on Lido Isle. California allow, I'm sorry, California law allows six or fewer sober living individuals to lease or own a home in any residential community to live together as a family unit without state license or local use permit, providing they do not receive any recovery services. If those residents are temporary, rotating in and out every few months, they cannot be considered as a family unit, and the dwelling is to be considered as a boarding house, subject to local use permit and business licensing. If six or less residents are provided rehab services, including detoxification, group or individual sessions, education, or other treatments, a state license and 24-hour residential supervision are required. If the residence is rented or owned by a business operator, it does not qualify as a standalone six or under facility. If a residence contains more than six occupants and rehab services are provided, it is subject to state licensure and, and a business permit. If more than six are under, if more than one six or under facility is operated by one recovery business, the facilities are considered as integrated, as having more than a total of six occupants, subject to local business licensure and permits. To avoid over-concentration in neighborhoods, sober living and recovery facilities are to be spaced at least one block of 617 feet from each other and from all public parks and facilities. The city has allowed one facility leased by Morningside Recovery, consisting of a triplex on Via Anteeps, Lido Isle, to operate as three separate six and hundred facilities to escape requirements for state licensure on one hand, but as a single facility to escape the single, the local 617-foot separation requirements on the other. And Morningside's own advertising lists a variety of recovery treatments available to the 10 clients who live there, which now should require state licensing. The city now has allowed Morningside to lease another resident at 533 Via Lido Sut to house five more clients who are also receiving recovery treatment, making a second unit of its integrated treatment facilities on Lido Isle. Lido Isle is, is a community of families with children of all ages. Not only is the second unit part of a business operation in an R1 residential zone, in which the city normally does not permit businesses to operate. May I have a couple more minutes?
Well, sir, we got a big crowd tonight, so I think we, we get the gist of your comments of Mr. Longyear. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's just that I...
If you'd like to submit them for the record, don't see that they get distributed to the council, Mr. Longyear. Thank you, sir.
I just question why we have such preferential treatment to Morningside at the expense of our citizens.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Joel Slutske, Lido Isle. I sat your last meeting, and I listened to you, Dave, say that you helped Morningside find a location, and it's a location at 533 Sut. You know, we sat here for, I can't count how many goddamn meetings and how much you guys spent on lawyers, and you made a wonderful presentation two years ago, saying, now here's the, here's the process. We're going to have a hearing, and everybody can come, and they'll get in front of a judge, and they'll say, hey, here's what's going on, and the judge will rule whether they can move into 533 Sut or any other facility. I missed something here, because I don't remember getting that notification that there is a meeting. I don't know who you sent the notification to, but that's what was decided after a long process. And I feel like either I didn't hear what was going on, or I don't understand what's going on, and I hope at the end, you'll explain how that process got warped to where you can get with Morningside and say, here's a building, why don't you move in here? Nobody looked at the CCNRs. I would appreciate any time you're talking to somebody to say, you better check on the CCNRs and see if it's an appropriate building. But I don't know how I missed the judge, the hearing, all of the things that you talked about.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Please state your name, sir.
Frank Randall, I live on Lido Isle. I served as a city councilman in South Pasadena about 40 years ago, when something similar to this came before the council. It was a proposal by an agency of the Los Angeles County to establish a halfway house for young girls, high school-aged girls, and it's similar in the respect that it would be six girls in the house. The, the main difference between that project and this project is that this was in a busy area. In fact, it was right next to the city post office, and it was only one block away from the most busy street in town, Mission Street. And it was not a profit-making institution, it was, it was done by an agency of Los Angeles County. And the, I, I receive, all the council people received a lot of calls and letters about this urging us to vote against it. I voted for it, but simply because the reason, the reason I did so was because it was a, a not a profit-making organization, and it was in an area which would not cause any problems for the residents. And I, I, if, if, it was not zoned for a profit-making organization, and those were my reasons. And I, if I had it to do again, I would vote the same way. But I would never vote for this project because this is, I don't, maybe zoning laws have changed, I, I don't know, but if it's possible to build a, or to start a, a profit-making organization on, on Lido Isle, of all places, then I, I, I really lost touch with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other speakers? Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
My name is Mike Bronczewatzky, I live on Lido. First of all, I'd like to thank Matt Cozy Lyon, City Enforcement Officer. He's done a tremendous job in addressing issues that we have raised, and in fact, resulting in documentation of violations by Morningside. I understand that documentation of violations is the first step in a lengthy process of enforcement. We hope that eventually we'll get to the enforcement part. I'd also like to thank members of the City Council, who've done years of service, addressing a very complex issue, and fashioned a very well-intentioned ordinance, which, on the face of it, for many reasons, is going to serve us very well into the future. However, like any piece of legislation, when unintended consequences of a component of the legislation arise, they should be addressed. Even the most well-intentioned documents need to have some degree of second thought when conflict arises amongst the very stakeholders that were meant to be addressed by that legislation. And I would submit to you that conflict has arisen between businesses that have a right to operate, create jobs, and pay taxes in our community, between the community itself, its leadership, and the very clients whose money fuels this conflict, which has arisen as an unintended consequence of what is otherwise a very well-intended piece of legislation. I've studied it, I've researched it, I've researched the laws around it. Having said that, this piece of legislation created a loophole for an entity which does not meet any definition of a family, of a recovery home, of a group living facility. In fact, it meets many definitions in the state's laws of a boarding house. It's a short-term rotated client facility where every 90 days, people rotate in, are not signatories to a lease, and the state attorney general himself opined several years ago that the very exact nature of this facility fits the definition of a boarding house. As such, it is a business, it is subject to regulation as a business, and this is the window, the unintended consequence of otherwise a very nice piece of legislation that was opened up by this legislation. And I would love to have the city attorney respond to that, I've sent him some information regarding this. I would like the city to not just listen and wait for that beep to go off at three minutes, but hear what I said and consider it at some further time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tom Billings, Newport Beach resident. First, I'd like to start, put on the record that I am not opposed to alcohol and drug rehabilitation businesses. I know they're called homes, but businesses in the, in the proper environment, as a previous speaker has spoken. Second, I want to thank concerned citizens of Newport, Central Newport Ball Bowl Association, West Newport Association, for their persistent efforts to fight the fight to protect Newport neighborhoods from the proliferation of rehab businesses in our residential community, including their support of Lido. I want them to be, you know, recognized, thank you for, for, you know, starting the fight. But I'd also like to speak tonight on behalf of someone who cannot be here, but if he were here, would be the first to speak out against proliferation of rehab businesses on, on the island. And I'm speaking of a gentleman named Hugh Cripe, who many here knew well. Hugh lived at 533B Lido Sut for over 30 years and passed away this year. His property then went to his children, who are now the landlords, to Morningside at that property. Hugh was a champion of family and community values on Lido, and would be appalled at what's happening in our residential community. Hugh and his wife Marion were like many who live on Lido. They lived there because it's family values and the wholesome activities the community embodied then and embodies now. Heavy smoking, swearing, tattoos, trash, vans coming and going at all hours, and businesses next to homes have never been part of Lido's shared values. The complicit parties in, in this unfortunate situation not only include the landlords at 533 Sut and 100 Anteeps, but the landlord who is actually leasing the office space to Morningside in Lido Village. Now, he has a right to do that. He owns the property, he can lease to whoever he wants. But just an FYI, the landlord for Morningside's offices in Lido Village is also a resident of Lido Isle. Just for the record, it's public record, it's not, not a secret. It is also a travesty that all three of these homeowners/landlords are all residents of Newport Beach and are putting money and greed above principle and ethical responsibility. Finally, the owner, owner of Morningside, who is also a resident of Newport Beach, needs to take responsibility for his actions, do the right thing, and find a more suitable location than in, than on a small island like Lido, which is a very dense residential neighborhood. The owner of Morningside, Mr. Yates, we expect you to, to do this, or try and do this. Try and find a more suitable location. Sure, we support your need to, to conduct your business, but not on Lido. It's not an appropriate environment, as we've heard tonight. You need, again, to put principle above money and ethics above your personal gain. Finally, I offer, I offer a solution to you, the council and city officials who represent us, to consider. That is, to carve out $10 million, I'm almost done, to carve out $10 million of your $150 million, I don't know the exact number, but your $150 million brand-new Civic Center budget, and build rehab homes next to the city hall, rather than next to our homes.
Thank you, Mr. Billings, your time is up. Next, next speaker, please.
In closing, I'm certain the, the residents would give you unanimous support of that.
No doubt.
Good evening, Cindy Kohler again. I, I don't know if you're aware, I started this fight mostly because of my children. We have a Superior Court Judge, Peter Espinosa, who ruled in favor of a group of sex offenders, arguing Jessica's law violates their constitutional rights. He ruled, his ruling blocked the ability to enforce that sex offenders have to stay 2,000 feet away from schools and, and parks. My question is tonight, and my concern is, not just with the group home issue, but with us as a city, but because of the group home issue and, and what's going on, and them being labeled disabled, how does that affect us? If a sex offender gets caught with a DUI, and he's automatically magically disabled, which supersedes his sex offender status or his disabled status? And does that make him eligible to come into our community, into these homes? That's my first question. My second question and, and statement is, I've been coming up here for, I don't know, years. Last three years, every time I've spoke in regards to anything concerning Morningside, I've been harassed horrifically. So, now that Mr. Hunt addressed my question as to who is addressing these issues and these violations with the homes, the, what's happening right now is, is the vans are on our streets and they don't, they speed, they come up our curbs, and they're still doing it. And in the, the development agreement, it says they're not even supposed to be on our streets. And this happens every single time, Lori Morris, Kenny Coleman, myself, anyone on our street speaks. So maybe you could reassure the people of Lido how this is going to go down for me, how we're going to address this issue as a city. how we're going to address this issue as a city? Because Lori Morris's son has been hit, was afraid to tell her because he thought she would move. How do we address these issues? We can't identify them. They go too fast. So as a resident, I would like to know how I can resolve this problem in my neighborhood because it's bad.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
My name is Steve Sutherland, and I live on Lido Isle. I have a question having to do with the zoning agreement. I have the zoning agreement for Sober Living in front of me, and I'm assuming the language is the same in the zoning agreement for Morningside. Where in the zoning agreement for Sober Living, it specifically gives Sober Living the right to have 12 beds on Lido. They have turned over the Anteeps property to Morningside now. So clearly, they have the right to add another 12 beds back on Lido. In addition to the Morningside homes that are there now. It also talks about the Peninsula Zone. In the agreements, it includes Lido Isle in what's termed the Peninsula Zone. And in that zone, and in that zone only, are they allowed to be in R1 neighborhoods. So because Lido is included in the Peninsula Zone in this agreement, they can be in R1 zones on Lido, but they cannot be in R1 zones in Crohn-Dumare or anywhere else in town. Now, is that the intent of the council in doing that? Or is that just something that was put in there because it was maybe the convenience of the operators because it was close to their facilities in Lido Village?
Thank you. Mr. Sutherland? Any other speakers? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I would like to thank Mr. Sutherland for raising that point. I brought up that very same point to Mr. Hunt and Mr. Kiff on previous occasions a number of months ago. It was very clear, expressed as a concern, that we would never be able to mitigate the overconcentration in the Peninsula Zone the way the agreements were crafted. And I asked for clarification specifically on this item. And I was looked at like I was crazy, and in fact, there wasn't any rationale for what I was saying. And factually, there is a rationale, and we'd like to get this cleared up. So at some point, the intent of the dispersal and the other things we were told as citizens was to mitigate and reduce the overconcentration in the Peninsula Zone. Well, it needs to be done. So if there are loopholes in these agreements, they need to be cleared up, and the agreements need to fulfill in actuality their intent, which is to reduce the overconcentration and its actual, not perceived, impacts for the residents in the coastal zone. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to let David and David respond to some of the questions that have been raised. But are there any other speakers before we do that? Okay, seeing none. Let me ask Dave and Dave. I know you both had some...taking some notes there and wanted to respond to a couple of the issues that were raised by the audience today.
I'll take a couple of them, David, Mr. Slutskey's and Ms. Oberman's, and you could add on to. Mr. Slutskey made an observation that I had somehow helped Morningside find 533 via Lido Suit. That is not true. I'm the city manager, and one of the things that my job is to implement that agreement. They contacted me with three different properties. One of them was 533 via Lido Suit. And the question asked to me was, would these comply with the distancing standards within the proposed zoning agreement at the time? Each of the three properties did. I actually encouraged them to look elsewhere. They ended up selecting this property. They went through, and I think, as noted, it was a surprise to me that they did it before a period at which I would have expected them to do that. But I didn't encourage them to go on Lido. I'm going to let David comment on Mr. Slutskey's other question about the development agreement versus the use permit process and how there's a hearing officer and one and not another. As to Ms. Oberman's concerns, Sober Living by the Sea has a bed cap of 204 citywide. 156 of those can be in the Peninsula Zone, which does include Lido. In fact, there's a 144 to 12-bed split for the Peninsula Zone. But those other 48 beds, those other 48 beds outside of the Peninsula Zone can be anywhere in town. Go ahead, Kathy.
Is that Morningside?
Sober Living.
Sober Living by the Sea, under the terms of its zoning agreement, it is required that any new facility that's opened up outside the Peninsula Zone be located in MFR zones. Morningside does not have a similar restriction in their zoning agreement.
Okay. So far, that's clear, I hope, for folks. David, you want to take the others? Actually, that was a combination of Ms. Oberman's and Mr. Sutherland's questions.
Sure. Pardon me. With respect to the issue of the hearing officer and the ordinance, yes, the ordinance is an excellent ordinance and frankly is on the cutting edge of the law. And it, in fact, is being enforced and is being actively used to address multiple issues regarding residential care facilities or group homes. It was not applicable pursuant to the zoning agreement, however, because the zoning agreement was entered into as resolution of pending litigation. What happened essentially was, is that there was litigation between Morningside and Sober Living by the Sea and the city. They essentially challenged our ability to enforce the ordinance against them. And in resolution of those cases, we came to an agreement that limited the amount of facilities they could put in the city as a whole, a substantial limitation, in our opinion, including the facilities we could not otherwise regulate whether through our ordinance or any other way. So, under the zoning agreement, they do have the freedom to place facilities within the city so long as they maintain their caps and so long as they maintain the dispersion requirements under the agreement. The Via Suit location meets those requirements. And for better or for worse, that's what's happening. And there's a give and take that comes into entering into these agreements, and that was part of the give and take. We did not facilitate the Via Suit residences, as was addressed by the city manager. There were questions that were raised with respect to...they talked about preferential treatment on Lido. There's neither preferential nor non-preferential with Lido. It's the subject of the zoning agreement. And it's unfortunate, and I understand, and all of us understand fully, what's going on with respect to Lido residents and are very tuned to making sure that the zoning agreement itself, as well as all of its operating conditions, are fully enforced so that we can maximize the protection of the Lido residents, as with every other residential community within the city, in a way that balances their interests with those of the disabled. I would point out a few things that are currently true that's occurred. I would point out that, one, for the interest of the residents of Lido, we have met with the LICA board. The LICA board has requested an informational meeting be presented to the residents of Ligo. An informational meeting will be attended by at least three, the people who are enforcing these agreements. So we'll have at least three of us there to make a presentation on December 1st, I believe, at 6 o'clock in the LICA Association's house, to give them all the information we have and to answer questions regarding enforcement of the zoning agreements and address their issues as they might exist regarding the facilities on their property or on the island itself. I'd also point out, too, is we are actively enforcing the zoning agreement with respect to every facility within the city that are subject to the zoning agreements, including the ones at 533 Via Suit. And there is an active work to try and bring it into full compliance with all of the provisions of the zoning agreement. And we're hopeful that we can achieve that within the short term. There was a question about sex offender status. It's separate from the issues under the zoning agreement. We have addressed that issue in the context of looking at the sex offender registration. We've seen emails going out regarding another operator supposedly anticipating taking sex offenders. To address the zoning agreement, Morningside expressly consented and agreed not to take sex offenders, not that it was part of their business model to begin with. But the rules regarding registration of sex offenders and their distance from actual schools and such are applicable under other sections of the Penal Code and, of course, will be enforced throughout the city, as would otherwise be required. Enforcement on the issues of the vans, we enforce the provisions of the zoning codes actively, or the zoning agreements actively. We have to operate based upon information provided to us and to take action using information, that information. And encourage anyone who feels that there's been a violation of a zoning agreement to contact our Code Enforcement Office. It's on our website. Janet Brown spoke the numbers and/or sent an email to Matt Cozylion, @CodeEnforcement, our senior code enforcement officer. And we will take all practical steps, if we can, to assure compliance with these zoning agreements.
Also happy to send the police by to take a look at River to make sure no one's speeding.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes, I actually wrote down a couple of other notes about questions that were asked, and I just want to make sure that we've covered everyone's questions here. Mr. Zawatsky raised the issue that there is a potential loophole in our legislation that allows, even under our ordinance, group homes to function as boarding houses in reference to an Attorney General opinion in that respect. Are you prepared to respond to that?
I'm not familiar with the Attorney General opinion. Our group home ordinance addresses...our group home ordinance addresses single housekeeping units. And to be sure, boarding houses are not single housekeeping units. It's an important concept for the enforcement of our group home ordinance, and we utilize it in order to regulate particularly any new group homes that wish to move into the city. So I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Zawatsky about that.
I wish you would, follow up on that with him, just to be sure that there's no misconception on his side or our side about that issue. With regard to Mr. Randall, who was on the City Council 40 years ago, congratulations to you, sir. With regard to that, though, he seemed to be unable to reconcile this issue of the possibility of a for-profit business operating in a residential area. This is a theme that gets repeated over and over again by people who are angry about this situation. The fact of the matter is, state law allows these businesses, we all acknowledge, they are businesses, for the most part, they are for-profit businesses, to operate in residential zones. We can't do anything about that as long as they are operating within the purview of state laws that regulate these issues. Can you expand on that just a little further?
Yes, and I appreciate his testimony because, I mean, every community that's faced this issue has to struggle with the conflict that can appear between the interest and the rights of the disabled to housing, as well as protecting the residential neighborhoods. And what Pasadena was facing 40 years ago was a markedly different legal environment than what the city of Newport Beach currently faces. We are operating pursuant to what's called the Fair Housing Act, which is federal legislation that protects the disabled, as well as the Fair Employment in Housing Act, which is state legislation that protects the disabled, that have been adopted since the time that the gentleman had to struggle for Pasadena. And essentially, that legislation specifically states, we are not allowed to discriminate against the disabled in housing opportunities, and they're entitled to equal access to housing throughout any city, as if they were living in a purely residential setting, depending on exactly what the size of the location or facility is. It does allow us to balance the interests of the community and also the residential neighborhood, but we have to be sure that we're not discriminating against the disabled. And those people who are suffering from addictions either to alcohol or drugs are considered to be disabled as they're in active recovery. So...
So we can regulate them.
We regulate them as best we can within the context of that, those two significant statutes. And frankly, we incurred the wrath of many facility operators who sued us that we're currently winning on, and I'm grateful for, in order to protect this ordinance, to maximize the protections for the residences within the city of Newport.
All right. I'm sorry to be tedious about that, but these people took their time to come down and ask these questions, and I want to make sure they get answers as best we can. Mr. Slutskey also raised this issue. He seemed to profess potentially some confusion about the fact that there was no real notice associated with Morningside, if I'm saying this correctly, with their selection of this location on Lido Isle, and that it was his understanding, under the purview of the ordinance that we passed, that there needed to be notice and hearings and all that sort of thing. Can you try to clarify that?
He is correct. Under the ordinance, 2008-5, there would be noticed hearings, and the issue of a, well, actually, reasonable accommodation or potentially a use permit would have to be considered by a hearing officer. But now, that's really applicable to pre-existing facilities that would go forward, unless it's going to an MFR, which is a multifamily residential zone, which does exist on Lido, but predominantly is a single-family residential zone. So, under the zoning agreement, however, Morningside, as well as Sober Living by the Sea, have the right to choose facilities that they can move into so long as they comply with every other provision in the zoning agreement, which includes the dispersion. In other words, they're separated, and also stay within their caps, both beds and client caps.
So there's no public notice or hearing required associated with those?
Not under the zoning agreements.
Okay. Lastly, Mr. Longyear made some statements here about his understanding of state law. I thought I heard some misconceptions in his statements about state law and the definition of single housekeeping unit, and there was quite a recitation there. But did you...do you recollect some of the statements that he made and what?
I honestly didn't catch everything that he was saying.
I couldn't quite write them all down either. But he was reading a bunch of things about separation, distance, hard and fast rules about distance and separation and those sorts of things, which I don't believe are a part of state law.
No, and I wrote down Mr. Longyear's questions as quickly as I could. I will probably miss some, but as a brief summary. Mr. Longyear discussed sober living homes, and he also discussed licensed facilities. He discussed six or under, with and without licenses. The provisions of state law are that if a facility is a licensed facility for six or fewer residents, then it is exempt from the local zoning ordinances. It has to be treated like a single housekeeping use.
Even if it is not a single housekeeping unit, it must be treated like a single housekeeping.
It's a legal fiction created by the California Health and Safety Code that cities are obligated to follow.
Even if it's operated by a for-profit business, it must be treated like a single housekeeping.
Neither state nor federal law distinguishes between whether it is a for-profit entity or a nonprofit entity.
I just want to make sure that people are clear on that point. We are dealing with a legal and regulatory framework here that very substantially restricts the cities, this city or any cities, or any counties, or the state of California's ability to regulate the location of these individual homes if they are licensed six-and-under homes. They cannot.
Licensed.
Licensed six-and-unders. The trade-offs, the big trade-off that we achieved in these zoning agreements is that these two operators agreed to limit, to substantially reduce and limit for the duration of their agreement, the total number of beds that they operate of any kind, including licensed six-and-unders. That was a very substantial quid pro quo, if you will, to the benefit of this city and our residents that we could not obtain under our ordinance or under state law. So there are trade-offs in these agreements. And one of the trade-offs is, they have the ability to locate within the zone. I realize that that is a...that carries the potential for upset, where they may locate in an area or next to someone that someone or that area doesn't like. But we achieved very substantial trade-offs for that in these agreements, and we can't lose sight of that. It's very, very important. Lastly, I would like the city attorney to at least recite shortly about, briefly, regarding the fact that we are enforcing the Morningside agreement, we have issued a notice of violation. We are continuing regular and appropriate enforcement activity regarding Morningside. And I think, as we amply demonstrated, Sober Living by the Sea with regard to this compliance report. But would you please just spend a few seconds talking about that, David? I just want to make sure people understand, this issue is not going unaddressed or ignored.
Certainly, I will, councilmember. As I think demonstrated by the report regarding Sober Living by the Sea, extensive resources and efforts have been put into assuring the Sober Living and efforts have been put into assuring that Sober Living by the Sea is in full compliance with its zoning agreement. Like efforts will be also invested, in fact, to date, probably more efforts have been invested to assure that Morningside itself is in compliance with the zoning agreement. A number of different things have happened since the council last heard this issue. One, the Morningside, Morningside has consented in writing and committed in writing that it will comply completely with the operating conditions of the zoning agreement. Two, evidence was brought to our attention, contrary to other evidence that we had, that Morningside was potentially over what we call the client bed count. That's an objective count of the number of beds, regardless of actual census, in other words, clients, within the city or within particularly the peninsula zone. We issued an inspection. Morningside cooperated. Matt Cozyline, our senior code enforcement officer, inspected all Morningside facilities, came to the conclusion they were in fact over their client bed count, albeit not over their client count, and we issued a notice of violation on that issue, as well as several other operating conditions that were observed as having been inconsistent with the zoning agreement. Morningside complied within three days from moving the client beds and also addressed the other issues. Further investigation has also gone on, particularly with respect to the operations of the 533 via Lido sued location, regarding operating, operating conditions that were potentially being violated by Morningside related to that location. We've confirmed violations and once again issued a notice of violation to Morningside, in fact today, on some of the other further operating conditions. The public should understand that we're committed to assuring and taking active steps to assure that Morningside complies with this agreement. And as code enforcement progresses, it then moves on to potentially administrative citations, which you could call fines, and then could potentially go on to legal action. To date, Morningside, when they've received notices of violation, has cooperated fully in addressing those notices of violation. So we're hopeful that we will demonstrate that other steps need to be taken by Morningside to assure ongoing compliance with all of its facilities, particularly those on Lido, because of the unique nature of that community and the location of some of those houses. So we will be actively enforcing the agreement, and I encourage the members of the public to contact our code enforcement department if they have specific facts that show a violation, and also if there are other violations that are occurring, either of the vehicle code or of a penal code or raise health and safety issues. Our police department is also available to address those types of code enforcement issues, and we will act quickly on those issues as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next item is item 14.
Did we go through the recommended actions for 13? Just to clarify?
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion on, we did. We're in public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item 14 is an ordinance regarding animals on public beaches.
And Mr. Mayor, actually, if it's okay with the council, I might suggest a five-minute break. We're kind of lost without our computer. That would give us time to boot that up, and it might give us time to bring the dog folks in.
All right. Five-minute break, please.[803.98]
And at the Recreation Commission's meeting on October 5th, they made a unanimous recommendation to the City Council to approve the following changes, which you're looking at tonight, which would change the current hours that animals are prohibited on the oceanfront to 10:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. year-round, excluding any changes from the harbor and bayfront beaches, and that would remain from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. year-round. Some of the reasoning behind the Commission's recommendations are they felt it was important to have consistent year-round hours to avoid any confusion for the public and to aid in enforcement efforts. And also, there was concern that irresponsible dog owners would negatively impact beach visitors with increased animal litter and dogs off-leash by expanding allowable hours. And they also felt that the additional time would assist during the winter months, November through January, when daylight is limited. That's essentially the hour and a half of added walking time. And that they felt that maintaining the restricted hours at the harbor and bay beaches were important due to over-concentration of animal waste on small beaches and related water quality concerns. So this has been a difficult topic for us. We've tried to balance the concerns of the community as best as we can. I do want to thank the public. They've come to many meetings to discuss their concerns. If you do approve this change this evening, we'll be back at your second meeting of November for a second reading. That does conclude our presentation, and we're going to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor.
Did the Commission consider banning dogs completely on bay harbor bay beaches? Was that discussed?
There was some conversation about that, and they felt very strongly that they did not want to do that.
Any other questions for staff? Let me open this up then to the public. For anyone who'd like to speak on this matter, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Randy Seaton, Balboa Island. I think this is a really good idea, can do a good conclusion for a kind of a quick idea that was probably great intentions but didn't have a lot of insight. One of the concerns I have for the beach, for the ocean beach consideration is that it goes from Big Corona to the River Jetty, and it doesn't, I don't know, I'm not positive if dogs are allowed at Little Corona Beach or not. Because that's an area of special biological significance. And as for the water quality nut I am, and concerns is that that could be as adding to the problem, just like we're seeing in the bay. And we know that a lot of, like, the Crystal Coast State Beach, they don't allow dogs at all. So I would think from Little Corona, south or east, would be off-limits for this change. If there is dogs there, I'm surprised. But other than that, I'm all for this, and I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaton. Any other speakers? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and Staff, Tom Houston, Balboa Island. I've emailed you folks some issues that I've been intimately involved in for some 20 years. An overall member of the, what used to be called Harbor Water Quality Committee, now it's the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee. Many of you folks have served at one time or another on that committee and been aware of the emphasis on water quality, beach quality, et cetera. And I listed my email to you, all the things that cause me grief, that the city has done to improve those issues that we had with pollution, et cetera, et cetera. To me, this seems like a perfect time for you all to make a minor change to what's been presented to you. Instead of continuing the hours on bay beaches from 9:00 to 4:00, 9:00 to 5:00, that should be, excuse me, banning all animals on the bay beaches would be another step forward in what the city has done over the past couple of decades in trying to improve beach and water quality. To me, it makes logical sense. You can't run your dog on, let's say, Balboa Island, I'm not aware of any other area except maybe over around the ALY Sea where there's space to jog up and down with a dog on a leash. You certainly can't pop the leash, throw a ball out in the bay, and enjoy the dog running back and forth. So I don't think the constituency of people who want to have dogs on the beach makes any sense. And I think you're potentially exposing the city to concerns as we, in the water quality area, move upstream trying to get other cities, Irvine and all the people in the watershed of San Diego Creek and Delhi Channel, and they say, "Well, geez, you're telling us we have to spend millions to upgrade what drifts down into the harbor, and yet you guys just continue to allow animals on the beach." Makes no sense to me, so I would suggest that small change to proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Other speakers? Don't wait.
Joe McCarthy, West Newport, 18-year resident. My main concern about increasing the hours at all for dogs on the beach is public safety. A few years back, I was jogging on the beach, which I do on a regular basis on West Newport, and two border collies, harmless-looking enough dogs, I saw them running around chasing birds, and as I approached, they circled, got in my path, impeded my progress, I stopped. One of them jumped up on me while the other one bit me in the back of the leg, knocked me down, and this hell happened in just seconds, and I was on the ground with my arms over my face trying to protect myself from these animals that just attacked me out of the blue. Meanwhile, their owner, who had come home from work, you know, he's sitting on his patio, he let them run loose, and he would just kind of watch them, it's something he probably did every day. He noticed, fortunately, relatively quickly, what was going on, and he called him and whistled and came running over and was, you know, very apologetic, and as I dusted myself off, I said, you know, "Go get your dogs before they attack somebody else." And, you know, this was, this was a few years ago, and I still jog on the beach on a regular basis. Those same dogs I saw numerous times afterwards, running wild on the beach. You know, a couple of times, I stopped by a trash can and just grabbed something in case they came. I was gonna, I wasn't gonna be attacked by those same dogs again. But my bigger concern now is that there's, in the area where I live and where my parents live, near the River Jetty, there's a, that area has almost become recognized as Newport's Dog Beach. And on a busy, on a busy beach day, we'll be down there, I have two toddler-age kids, and we've got nephews and nieces, and we'll be down there as a large group, and dogs will wander from that area all the time. And, you know, the lifeguards can't be in charge of enforcing the leash laws, and I, in my understanding from comments that I heard from Animal Control at the last meeting on October 5th, was that they have a very hard time enforcing that law. On October 6th, I went for a jog, and just for the heck of it, kept track of how many dogs I saw that afternoon. I saw eight dogs, three of them on a leash. One of them, similar situation to the time that I was attacked by those two dogs, had been let loose. I saw the woman on her patio, she was watching her dog run up and down the beach. As I approached, it came running up to me, stopped me, I just, I stopped and kind of just looked at her and shrugged my shoulders like, you know, "Do you realize that your dog's not supposed to be running around off a leash?" And she, "Okay," and then she, at that point, she decided to go, you know, go get her dog and take it off the beach. But I'm concerned that of the increased potential for people to be bitten by dogs at the beach if we increase the hours during which dogs are allowed on the beach, because not, it seems, it's pretty obvious people like to take their dogs to the beach because they consider it an open area where they can let them run around a little bit. And as you add hours that dogs are allowed, there's just gonna be more people who are violating the leash law and therefore potentially more incidents.
Thank you, sir.
And it would be irresponsible or potentially negligent to increase the probability of those incidents.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
I'm Nancy Moran Sanchez, Corona del Mar resident since 1979. We've always had a dog until my husband passed away, and he always wished that he could have our dog, they could have more time and fun on the beach and the grassy areas for longer periods of time on the leash. This doesn't change anything about the leash law. The greatest enforcers of the leash law are the good dog owners. When somebody has their dog off the leash, the good dog owners there just go after that person and tell them, "Hey, get out of here, get your dog on a leash." So I think it's wonderful, and people that break the law, we shouldn't cater all of our laws to the lawbreakers. We should cater our laws to the good people of Newport Beach with their wonderful pets. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other speakers, please.
Hi, my name is Michael Hernig. I've lived in Newport Beach about 17 years. I live right on the sand at 4405 Seashore. I'm actually not quite in favor of this law. I actually would prefer to have the law changed so that on oceanfront beaches, people would be able to bring their dogs in the winter, essentially what the original proposal from City Council was. The current law and the law that we're considering here basically still forces dog owners in the winter to walk either on the street, where they basically have to deal with motorcycle, with bicyclists and motorists and skaters, and of course motorists, bicyclists and skaters have to deal with dogs. I've ridden bikes on the bike lane, and, you know, whenever you pass somebody with a dog on a leash, the dog, you never know if it's gonna bolt right in front of you, and, you know, we all say that the law is supposed to say that, I guess, the speed for bikes is very, very slow, but, you know, you see people racing down Seashore Drive on bikes. And it is potentially dangerous for the dog owners, the bicyclists, and everyone. In the winter, sunset is probably the most popular time to go out onto the beach. The law as it stands right now and what's proposed here basically forces dog owners who want to walk their dogs on the beach to come out right at that moment, so that during the most popular point of the beach, you also have virtually every dog owner come onto the beach at exactly the same time. I don't think that's particularly beneficial to, well, anybody. Allowing dog owners to walk all day in the winter would allow people who don't want to walk right at that moment to walk earlier and not end up interfering with everybody else who wants to be on the beach at that particular hour, though it's pretty much prime time for the beach in the winter. The real question is, where do we want our dogs to walk? Where do we want people to walk their dogs? Do we want them to walk on the streets, in the bicycle lanes, on the beach, along Balboa Boulevard? As to whether or not people are gonna start traveling to Newport Beach, I know several people, myself included, who live in Newport Beach, and I take my dog and they take their dogs over to Huntington Dog Beach, because that's actually a much better place if you're gonna just play with your dog. Newport Beach is a great beach for walking a dog, not particularly good for playing with a dog, because you have to have your dog on the leash the entire time. The beach is also not a particularly safe place for elderly people to walk and our senior citizens to walk their dogs. 4:30 leaves about half an hour for two months of the year of safe time for people who are seniors and have night blindness to walk their dogs. I know I've walked my dog on the beach at 5:00 o'clock in the winter and ended up stubbing my toe on those rock jetties, partially hidden rocks, that you can only see in fairly decent light if you have night blindness. Again, I just ask, where do you really want these dogs to be walked? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? Somebody come.
Hi, my name is Shirley Reiner. You've heard me speak before on this same issue. I have here petition with 347 signatures asking for Mike, what Mike just asked for. And that's what we originally went in for six months ago. We appreciate any extended hours, yes, of course, but this seems like it would be the way to go. In the winter, there's nobody there. During the summer, we know the beaches are crowded, and that's okay, 9:00 or 5:00. But during the winter, when there's nothing, it's not being used, there's no reason that we can't walk and run our dogs. We're down to the beach to run our dogs, get exercise or walk our dogs, and we have them on leashes, and that's where they belong. The lifeguard chief battalion, Jim Turner, would have you believe that the reasons, some of the reasons, is when there are Santa Ana conditions. So last week, there were Santa Ana conditions. I was at the beach every day, checked it all out, rode the bike up and down between each lifeguard tower. There was 10 to 20 people at any time during the day. It's hardly a crowd, it's hardly a swell, and the lifeguards usually don't need to, I mean, they're watching the water, they're not watching dogs. Anyway, we, like we said, the oceanfront beaches, this is where it should be, and the bayfront can be completely different, we understand that. You've gotten all our emails, and thank you very much for your quick response, Mayor Carey. We will enjoy any time we have on the beach. Thank you very much.
Other speakers? Sir?
Thank you. My name is Jim Uer. I live at 6,300 West Oceanfront, which is right in the corner of Prospect and Oceanfront, right on the sand. We are dog owners, we hang out on the patio and visit with all the neighbors as they go through, that's a choke point for access. The light there at Prospect has many people coming through there. We support the proposed time recommendations or time change that you have here. We believe the current time restrictions limit most dog owners who are locals to walk the beach. We believe that if the time limits are completely removed, Newport will turn into Dog Beach, and people won't be there just to walk their dogs, they'll be there to hang out all day and spend their time with the dogs like they do in Huntington Beach, and we don't feel like that's the right use for the city's beaches. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Sean Pence. I'm a homeowner in Newport Shores, here to speak about the dog issue as well. As Mr. Uer said, we also support the limitation of the hours in which dogs can be on the beach. As a father of three young children, we spend a lot of time at the beach and enjoying that part of Newport, and I would hate to see it change for a variety of reasons. I think the two issues that are probably most significant, one would be the increased amount of dog pollution, if you will. I think that's a significant issue in our neighborhood, and I've seen it on the beach, and I know it will continue, and if the hours are extended, I fear that the beauty of our beaches and part of the reason people come to Newport and enjoy those areas would be diminished. And lastly, I think there's a liability issue involved. You know, as a father of three, there are instances and times when dogs attack children and come after them regardless of the leash laws, and I would hate to see that become a problem in our city and on our beaches. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, saying none, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Is there a discussion or a motion?
I move the recommended action of the PBR Commission.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second.
Is there any interest in considering banning them on the bay beaches completely?
I personally would like to go towards what the PBR Commission had recommended. They apparently at least considered that, and maybe we should continue to monitor it, but not at this time.
I would agree with Mr. Webb on that. I think we need to be mindful of the fact that our PBR Commission spent a lot of time listening to public testimony and thinking through these issues. And I would just like to really thank them, by the way, because that's where we send our tough issues to be dealt with, and they've been doing a pretty good job of dealing with them of late. So I think we ought to give this a chance, and we ought to thank our commissioners for the good job that they did in listening to the public and in trying to create a balanced response. You know, in reference to the comments of the final speaker, though, you know, one thing that concerns me is that we, if we're gonna do this, we really need to provide a greater access to doggy bags at the street ends and at other strategic locations, and so I'd like to see us come back with a game plan for making, you know, dog bags more accessible on our beach areas and in other places where this is an issue.
And we are looking at that, Mr. Mayor.
I think that needs to be accelerated.
Thank you for raising that point. We really don't have any on the ocean beaches, and so...
You're correct.
That would be a good thing to do.
Is there further discussion?
I'll just add that, and I agree about the dog bags, but, you know, I guess something that resonates through this conversation here tonight and other issues, it comes down to enforcement. And, you know, I understand that we have budgetary constraints and certain things are hard to enforce, but I'd like to see a discussion, it doesn't have to be next week or next month, but soon, about how we can go about enforcing things that need to be enforced, I guess. It's kind of a generic thing, but, you know, we, people come here, I mean, I don't, the issue's not walking the dogs on the beach, that's, for me, it's not. I mean, I guess it resonates with me because I do see dog people on the beach without the leash. I've, you know, been there, I've had my own dog on the beach without a leash in the past, so I understand, I'll fess up. It's a little tiny Palm Rainy.
Chief?
Never bit anybody.
That's a confession.
The dog's passed away, so you've lost your evidence. But I, it's, you know, it's this, you know, I hear it in use permits for restaurants where we don't follow up on our, you know, they promise they're gonna have parking, and then, you know, three years later, there's no parking anymore, and there's no enforcement, there's no follow-up. So, you know, it's a thread that kind of runs through a lot of things. It may not even always be the same issues. I'm looking at Mr. Kiff here because it's gonna be his place to find some money to make this happen, and it's other things. It's a lot of quality of life issues around town that we kind of look the other way on, you know, trash cans that sit in an alleyway forever, people who take advantage of other people's good nature because, you know, they do things that they shouldn't be doing. And it's not like I'm looking to enforce a police state here, but, you know, there are things that we should be doing better as a city, I think, enforcement-wise. And, you know, it could be just like DUI checkpoints, you know, we do those occasionally. Well, maybe we have occasional enforcement, and I see Animal Control out there in the audience, and I know that they're out on the beaches, you know, on occasion and do some of this, but there's gotta be a better answer, is what I'm saying. So, and I'd like to seek that better answer at some point in the future.
Councilmember Zansky, if they could comment, Mr. Mayor. You raise a good point. I wanted to push back gently because you don't hear, you will hear sometimes from the enforcement, we do too much. You get those wines that were pestering folks, but you've identified a couple of areas where you will hear a lack of enforcement, but I think that's the exception rather than the rule. And I will report back on, we're doing a couple of different things with code enforcement and entering into the Morningside Agreement, of course, may adds to the demands on that staff, but Park Patrol will do, leash law enforcement, so will Animal Control. I know the chief's here, I'm sure he's taking notes, thinking about what he would call a POP, Problem-Oriented Policing, of that specific area at that specific time. That's what we do. I don't know that it's a resource problem, but if this community is interested in, it's certainly interested in the minimal enforcement we're promising to do, but if we want to do more, I'm happy to propose that. I think it does make for a cleaner, neater community, but it is a little different style.
No, I understand, and mostly the people who are gonna complain are the ones that are walking their dogs on the beach without a leash and are gonna get a ticket. Yeah, they'll complain. Maybe it's just something we can come back on a study session on and talk about a little bit more, what we are doing to enforce things, and maybe it's my ignorance in not understanding all the things that we are doing to enforce various little quality of life issues, I think, that we see around town, that, you know, we pride ourselves on being the best, and hopefully we can excel in that area, too.
I actually don't think it's your ignorance. About that, anyway.
Good. You heard it here, folks.
And because I see evidence of that in the survey we just got back, continuing issues regarding enforcement, especially for property maintenance and that sort of thing. But better than last time. But, oh, yes, no. We're ramping up. Absolutely, it's improved, but I'm hoping that when you come back with your recommendations, you'll continue to address that issue, too, maybe now in a little broader sense.
All right. Any further discussions? Saying none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next item is, item, are we going to do the Public Finance Corporation first, or are we gonna do the item S17 first? Does it make a difference? Let's do S17 first.
S17 first?
Okay, then we'll adjourn and go into the Finance Committee, or the Finance Corporation.
That's the approval of the contract with Boland Swinski-Jackson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's 16, S16.
Yeah. Give us just a second, Mr. Mayor.
This is the evening where we're gonna ask you to authorize the financing of the Civic Center project. I'm gonna go through a PowerPoint with Tracy McCrane, the Finance Director. We do have, you see a lot of suits in the audience, and that's because that's the financing team. This is an important decision, and that backs that up. So we're gonna go, we're gonna give you a little briefing about the project. It's been a while since we talked about the project. We'll quickly introduce the financing team, talk about what the financing is itself, what is a certificate of participation, the financing structure, as well as legal documents. We'll start to close with the credit strength. You folks saw in the paper how good our credit rating is, and then we'll talk about next steps in a summary. The Public Works Director is here, Steve Batum, in case you have any questions about the project estimate, but I'm gonna go through that next here. We started, remember, this is a project that's been going on since March of 2008, shortly after the approval of Measure B, which in effect moved the City Hall site over to the Avocado site. And at that time, you go through what's called a concept design, and you have a fairly fuzzy estimate, and at that time, the high end of that estimate was 140. Then council approved the concept design and moved into schematic, that's the next phase, where you refine those plans a little bit more, and that estimate was down to 134. Then we moved to the design development phase, that's where the estimate, sorry, the project plans are refined even further, and that estimate came in even lower. And then finally, the construction documentation phase, and this is the current estimate at 123. The construction documentation phase is literally the plan set that will go out to bid, and companies will bid on it and will build literally according to that construction document set. And that's the phase we're just finishing up right now. In fact, we're actively plan-checking that up in San Francisco with the architect. This is what that 123 looks like, the City Hall Office Building, 56, the parking structure, 7.4 million, grading and export, 7.5, the Central Library expansion, 10.1, the parks, the North Park, the Central Park, the Civic Center, Civic Green Park, 18 million. There's a construction contingency, this is separate from the owner's contingency, that's 2.9 million. The project design is a not-to-exceed cost of 12 million. This looks high to many people, it still looks high to me. Remember, though, this is a five-year process with the architects, the engineers, et cetera. There's a lot of work going into these documents. Project management, this is a not-to-exceed amount also, that's with CW Driver, and then FFNE, Furniture, Fixtures and Equipment, total of 123. I'm gonna stop there for a second. We have not gone out to bid yet. We are bonding based on these estimates at construction document phase. I fully expect this number to come down, I'm an optimist. We'll know what that final hard bid number will be between the mid-part of December and the first part of January, as CW Driver receives the bids and normalizes them, that's to make sure there aren't any errors in the bids. That's when we have someone coming in to say, "I will perform this service at this price," and that's when we really hold to that. So in light of the labor and materials costs, which are still way low, I still think this is a high amount. The Public Works Director and I discuss this often, he will be more conservative than I, being the optimist. There is a cost of issuance associated with this, 1.3 million, and then, as you folks know, talked about refinancing the library bond with some savings that Tracy will talk about, that's a $3.5 million value, so at 127.8.
Dave, is the bridge over San Miguel in these numbers?
The bridge is not in this number. There's a possibility that we're actually gonna put the bridge out to bid, and you can decide into January and February whether or not you want to do that based on what the bid comes back at. This is, yeah, typical pie chart, just because I like to see it somehow, sometimes this way, showing what share of that 123 the project elements' costs are, because I know many people still refer to it as the massive City Hall project. It's much more than that. It's grading, it's the library addition, it's the parking... than that. It's, it's grading, it's the library addition, it's the parking structure, it's the parks. And it's been talked about at this level since May of 2008, when your council and the Design Committee worked on that and approved those design parameters. With that, I'm gonna hand this over to, to Tracy to tell a little bit more about the financing.
Thank you. Okay, I listed our entire financing team here. I'm not gonna go over each role and responsibility, but I did put the main primary roles and functions that each of these experts are assisting the city team with on the financing. For your city team, it's the city manager, myself, my deputy, the Public Works Director, and the City Attorney's Office. Our financial advisors, fieldmen, rolup and associates are here. There are representatives from all of our consulting firms here today to answer any questions that the mayor, council or public may have. Our bond counsel is Stradling, Yoka, Carlson and Roth. Disclosure Counsel is Hawkins, Delafield and Wood, and our lead underwriters are here, Stone and Youngberg. They are our lead or senior underwriters, and they are in charge and, and working day to day with the financing team. We also have others in our underwriting team, those are Bank of America Merrill Lynch, Raymond James and De La Rosa and Company. Just to go over the financing overview, we anticipate issuing a not-to-exceed amount of 128 million. That breakdown has just been given by Dave. These are in certificates of participations, or what I will refer to as COPs through the rest of the presentation. COPs are secured by lease payments, and they're subject to annual appropriations from our general fund. They're gonna finance the new Civic Center complex, all components that Dave just brought out, and that we're going to take advantage of the good market conditions at this time, and we're refunding the 1998 Central Library COPs. This council actually already approved that refunding on October 26th, as we had to set the money aside by November 1st. But because of the good market conditions, we're estimating a savings of over $115,000 a year. We're still only paying out the remaining nine years on those bonds, we haven't changed that payout schedule, so that would lead for an overall, all-in savings over the nine years of $1 million. So what are the certificates of participation? They're actually the most commonly used financing instrument by local governments here in California. Our, Stone and Youngberg actually did some calculations for us real quick. We've actually, the State of California, various local county, state governments, hospitals, schools have issued almost 950 different COP issues in just the past five years. So that tells you how common these are for California public corporation, or public entities. They're structured as lease obligations, and COPs, they're like bonds, but they're not general obligations of the city, and therefore, they don't involve any increases to local taxes. The typical steps that you would find in the lease obligation are here, again, I won't go over them, but the city is the lessy, and the lessor is the Newport Beach Public Facilities Corporation, and that's why you will be adjourning as that corporation after this meeting. The, the facilities that we've chose to include as the lease premises are basically the collateral that the city's putting up, so that we eliminate the need to finance capitalized interest of almost $13 million. That has, that also has a savings to the city, because we're able to do this at this time. That savings over the, the life of the COPs is over 750,000. And basically, all of these essential city assets, and I'd just like to note that one of the Fitch comments, when they gave us our AAA, was that this was a solid legal structure using these essential leased assets, is, is just one of the many reasons that we got such a strong rating. But as soon as the Civic Center site is complete, which we're expecting about December 2012, the city plans to release the liens on all of these assets. Therefore, the only encumbrance related to this COP will be the Civic Center itself. The financing structure we're contemplating at this time involves both tax-exempt and taxable bonds. And tax-exempt is the regular COPs that municipal governments issue, the interest payments are not subject to federal income tax, that's the type of COPs we issued for the 1998 Central Library COPs, so the city has done that before. But in 2009, as part of the stimulus package, the federal government offered these Build America Bonds, or what we refer to as BABS, and the interest payments are subject to federal income tax, so it makes them a lot more attractive to many more investors. But what the federal government has done, as part of the stimulus, is offer to pay the issuer, or us, the city, a subsidy of 35% of that interest rate back to us. So even though the investors are receiving a higher interest rate, the city's getting an offsetting revenue to offset that additional cost to the city. So, it's been a very successful program. Again, it just was implemented in 2009, and it's already set to expire December 31st. So again, another reason why it's critical, if we're going to take advantage of this beneficial situation, we only have through the end of December to do so. And our team has been working on the economic benefit by utilizing this kind of what we call a hybrid structure, and as of November 1st, the dollars were still estimated to save the city over $306,000 a year in debt service. So the first 10 years of, of the issues will be these tax-exempt COPs that we usually use, but then the long end, the, the other, you know, the, the 11th year to 30 year will be these BABS, where we will be getting these subsidies from the government. That works out to over $9 million over the life of the bonds, and that's a present value savings of $5 million to the city today. This is just the preview of the sources and uses document for the financing structure, and it shows how we're contemplating, again, this hybrid. Here's the tax exempts for the early part of the bonds, and then the, the later part with the BABS. Now, we gave you a lot of legal documents, and I'm not gonna go over the descriptions of each one, but I have put just a very high-level definition of, you know, what the site lease is, what the lease purchase agreement is, but I really did want to spend a little bit of time on the POS. This preliminary official statement is similar to a prospectus and a corporate contacts. It's our disclosure document, it's prepared by us, the city. City management is responsible for all the financial data, the disclosures, everything in this document, but we work hand in hand with the advice of all of our financing team. But it's very clear that this is a city management responsibility. The POS contains all sorts of information on the securities, or the certificates, the securities pledge, the financial condition of the city. It basically has, you know, all the information from our CAF in it. But this is the document that our underwriters are gonna use to sell our certificates to the investors, and it's what the investors are gonna rely on. And that's why it is just critical that the data be accurate and that all disclosures be there. And our Disclosure Counsel, who is also here today, provided this council a memo on Friday night about the elected officials' role in reviewing this document. And, and part of that is making sure that you're comfortable with, with management's, you know, competence in putting this data together. So I just wanted to confirm to this council, Dan and I have three to four managers working on this document for the past six months. Dan and I have been through every single page of this document, probably a dozen times, as has the City Attorney's Office. Dave, I'm sorry, of course, the city manager has read it, he's memorized it. And, and Steve Batum has gone through it, HR has gone through the insurance. So I just wanna give you, you, you can have confidence in your management team. We've taken a lot, a lot of responsibility with this document, and we know that that is our responsibility. But you also have this team of experts behind me, the bond counsel, disclosure counsel, our financial advisors and underwriters. We've probably been in a dozen meetings to discuss every single page of this document and every single page of the legal documents you have before you. And I just wanna give you my assurance that we took this very seriously. Again, I'm not gonna go over each of the other documents, but I did put some just high-level descriptions of who's entering into the documents, is it the city, the corp or trustee, and if it's this council's pleasure, I'd like to just kind of go forward to just some of the more notable financing terms also as part of this package. Because of our strong financial health, the city is not going to have to finance a reserve fund. This is, this is relatively new in public finance. It's, it's more common in the taxable bond area, but normally you would have to set up a reserve fund. In our case, it would have been eight, almost $9 million that we would have had to add to our financing, so above the 128. We would have had to pay cost of issuance on that, we would have had to pay debt service on that, but because of our strong fiscal health, our strong reserves, our AAA rating, we are not having to do that. So, that, that says a lot for the financial condition of the city, but, you know, and in doing that, we're saving over $1,008,000 over the life of these bonds. Another thing, we've talked about the leased asset structure, that asset transfer is actually those lease premises that we're putting up as collateral. So I've already kind of talked about, normally, if we didn't have those assets to put up as collateral, we would also have to finance an additional almost $13 million in bonds. By not doing that, again, we save cost of issuance, we save in debt service over the, the life of the COPs. And then finally, the refunding of the library, we're saving that $115,000 over the remaining nine years. So if you add up all those gross amounts, and then you add in the benefit of issuing the BABS of the $9 million over the years, that's a total 30-year savings to the city of $12,837,000 because of this financing structure, which is pretty incredible, but talks to you about how this is the right time to do these bonds. The net present value on that $13 million is $7 million, so that's today's money over the 30 years. You know, another reason why now, well, we, we took, these are the shorter-term treasuries, 10-year treasuries. This is a 48-year span, so almost 50 years. The only time these treasury yields have been lower was at the height of the economic recession in 2008. So, you know, when people say, you know, "Why finance?" Well, this is in over 50 years, rates have never been lower. When you look at the 30-year treasury, same thing. This is 33 years, but again, these are the long end, I'm sorry, these are the long end of the curve, and again, the only other time that rates were lower was at the height of the economic recession. So, again, just, just showing that this is the right time in the market. We've talked about the BABS with the subsidy. Again, you know, this is another reason for the enormous savings that we are still experiencing. Did wanna tell this council, we are looking at each day up until pricing, which is next Wednesday and Thursday, of what the market conditions are. As of the last analysis that our team did, it was looking at, you know, 5.2 million present value, or this $9 million, but we will look at that up until next week, but we're hoping to stay strong at, at something close to that savings. Again, we've planned for this. This is not anything that we just decided to do a year or two ago. The city has a long history of long-term financial planning, and that council policy, F-28, that creates the facilities replacement plan, we have a 30-year plan. Again, this was noted in all of the rating agency comments about the city's, you know, prudent fiscal management, their long-term planning. We've also been able to set aside $31 million in a replacement reserve, and our plan doesn't even show using that. That's just in case, you know, what if the general fund revenues go again? It is available for debt service if we need it, but our plan as it stands right now doesn't really, you know, show needing that upfront. And then, another important part of that facilities replacement plan is this limit that this council has put, and when they said, you know, "We're, we're serious about this long-term planning, we want to be able to keep up our facilities, but at no time can we ever contribute more than 5% of the total general fund operating budget out of the general fund." So in keeping with this plan, we're able to make, make this issue and keep our facilities up to date. And then, in, I just wanted to close again with our ratings. You know, we are only one of five California cities to get a AAA underlying rating from all three of the top rating agencies. We're the first in Orange County, and I mean, that's an incredible feat. Our COPs are rated at AA2, AA+, that's basically the highest attainable rating you can get for a COP issue, because it's that lease obligation, not a general obligation backed by taxes. So, you know, what I, I would like to just, you know, let the council and the public, no, don't just take my word or the city manager's word, but these are three independent rating agencies that have given us this rating, and it's pretty impressive. You know, and just some of the comments that I wanted to tell, just remind the public, and they can find the press releases here on the City of Newport Beach's website, but very strong financial operations by, demonstrated by high fund balance, debt profile is strong, low debt level. So, I just wanted to bring that point, too.
Including, let me talk about what's next. Assuming your council approves this tonight, the pricing of the COPs, as Tracy mentioned, would be November 17th and 18th. Before that, actually, the end of this week here, looks like on Veterans Day, is our target for plan completion, so that's the 100% CD set with building permit issuance. Again, we're actively plan-checking that this week. The COP closing date would be November 30th, with the proceeds available for the project at that point. We're trying to meet that December 1st deadline when the library COPs need to be redeemed. In mid-December, jumping back to the project, the bids would, would be returned for the various trade packages, and then there's a period of time, again, where CW Driver would normalize those bids, potentially bringing that back to you on January 23rd with the final construction guaranteed maximum price amendment to the, to the council. And then, assuming you approve that on January 23rd, February of, of 2011, it's beginning the construction of all the elements you would have approved at this point in time. So in summary, this is all part of the master plan you've approved. It's a great construction bidding environment. As Tracy explained, this is an efficient legal financing structure. We've got historically low interest rates and the opportunity to use the BABS. We had great ratings from the three agencies, and to reassure the folks at home, this is paid for by existing revenue sources, it's not an additional tax levy. With that, I'm gonna leave a slide up on the board that just is the recommended action for you, and we certainly welcome your questions.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Mr. Webb?
I'd like the opportunity to make the motion on this, if I can, the recommended action, and I'd like to move that, but I'd like to start off with, just before retiring back in 2001, I guess it was, or the year that we were doing, we, we managed to put in the budget several portable units to be placed around the City Hall campus. And as a result of that budget item, the council, at really the urging, I think, of the person that came before me in District 3, said, "We really need to get started on building a new City Hall if we don't have enough room to put the City Hall, and we have to put temporary buildings up." So, and it's been a great pleasure of mine, having begun my work career in 1968 in this facility, to be a part of the city council in putting together and, and seeing the beginning of a new City Hall for Newport Beach. And I'm just really proud to, to, that this day has come, and as a result, I, I would like to, to make the motion for the recommended action on these bonds.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Rosansky, thank you. Mr. and Ms. Councilor Gardner?
Yeah, ideally, I would think, we would get the bids, the final bids. We'd have a firm amount, and that's when we would issue bonds. But because of the BABS, we, we want to take advantage of all these things, which is great. But, so, I, you know, we come back, you get your way, you're optimistic, we come back with 120 million instead of 128 million. Now, do we just spend that money on other stuff? We have, like, "Oh, we'll have a little solar here, and we'll do it," or do we kick it back someplace? I mean, if we're gonna be paying interest on it, we want to obviously get some benefit out of it. So what happens in that situation?
It, it's certainly gonna bet to the council as to what to do in the event there are proceeds above what we're projecting. I, I think what, what our recommendation would be to look at your next projects on the list, especially the Marina Park project. Sunset Ridge may not quite be ready, but we've ensured through Bond Counsel that those are appropriate uses of those additional proceeds.
Mr. Rosansky?
Oh, no, sorry.
Mr. Selich?
Yeah, well, just to follow up on Don's comments, if you look out in the audience here, not a lot of people here compared to the meetings we had three years ago when we got started on this. It's really kind of amazing to look back over the path we've traveled over the last three years or so, and, and here we are, issuing 128 million worth of COPs. Pretty nice.
All we got, the audience, is suits.
Well, I hope they're not empty suits. Let's, uh, let me, let me ask the, let me ask, is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this matter? If we have some public here. All right, thank you, then we'll bring it back to the council.
I suggested a little while earlier that they ought to all be wearing Rinspooners since they're here in Newport Beach, but for some reason or another, they didn't like that idea. They like to be formal.
Don, I guess we'll have to invite you to the grand opening for the Civic Center.
Well, before we, we vote on this, I'd just like to say a word of thanks and congratulations to our finance team, who have done a great job, and particularly to our staff, who have worked to bring us to where we are today. This is a, a critical path and a, and a red-letter day in the accomplishment of the Civic Center plan that the people voted on, that has been, as, as mentioned before here, something that this city's been trying to get done for many, many years. Some of the members of our finance committee, our finance team, have worked on it for many, many years, and a few false starts, so I- on it for many, many years, and a few false starts. So I know they're happy to see us get to this point today. Let me just amplify a couple of the things that Tracy said, because we have really, and I think staff has really levered off of the sound financial position of the city to get us to some of the things we're doing today. We're refunding the library COPs. That's a deal that was probably too small itself. Cost of issuance would have been too big a proportion of the deal, but by putting it into this deal, we're able to refund those COPs, generate $100,000 of savings, $1 million over the remaining life of those COPs. Avoiding having to do capitalized interest, because we have an asset base where we can avoid doing that, saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Not having to have a reserve fund, which has always been a credit condition for these transactions, is a tremendous accomplishment that saves taxpayers a tremendous amount of money here in Newport Beach. So this transaction, I think, has been structured to take advantage of the Build America Bonds, which are going away at the end of the year unless Congress, which is somewhat disorganized as we speak, manages to reauthorize the program. It's not likely, even if they do, that it will be authorized under the same generous terms that it currently is under. So the stars have aligned. I feel very confident that our finance team and our staff is going to deliver great value for the city in the pricing next week, and I think this is a very proud moment for everybody in the city. Councilmember Daigle?
I would agree, and also a lot of leadership on that facilities finance plan, as well as the council members that worked in the building committee and worked through all that grading plans and whatever the other activities that you were doing.
As well as our finance committee members that slaved over this as well. Plenty of accolades to go all around.
We will all join hands now and sing kumbaya. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, now, should we adjourn into the facilities corporation? All right, I'm going, we're going to come back to the council meeting. So I'm going to adjourn, and then we're going to come back to the council meeting right now, and we're going to call to order the Newport Beach Public Facilities Financing Corporation roll call. Madam City Clerk?
The record will reflect that all facility corporation members are present?
Item 2, the Public Facilities Financing Corporation refinance of the Central Library COPs and finance of the Civic Center project. Is there a motion?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Is there a member of the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'm now going to adjourn the meeting of the Newport Beach Public Facilities Financing Corporation. And we will go back to item S17, approval of professional services agreement with Bullen Swinski.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, related item, this is construction support for our architect to provide a not-to-exceed amount. This is where they will oversee the actual, the implementation of their designs. And when I say oversee, it's really CW Driver that is doing the day-to-day work. We do expect the architect to be on-site sometimes, hopefully not too much, because we want to save as many costs as we can here. We'll be using video cameras a lot, hopefully, because they are a San Francisco-based firm. But your approval of this item would authorize, again, them to go to a not-to-exceed amount, which we watch closely, and CW Driver watches closely.
Mr. Selich?
Yeah, Dave, the, if you look at page 3 of the staff report, the total to the architects is $14.5 million, but on page 4 of the PowerPoint you did, the all-in construction document page, you have $12 million listed. So where's the difference?
You want to help me out on that one, Mr. Public Works Director?
I'm looking at that, too. Oh, because some of the, with the construction support and grading, and the bid construction support, I think we've separated out, but I'd have to go back and look at that.
So that's in another category in the PowerPoint?
Yeah, that's in the project management, I believe. I'd have to go back and look at that. Those exact numbers for you. Because the $10 million that is currently in design, we also included the costs for the environmental document, the design competition, and geotechnical reports, and other miscellaneous reports. So that made up the 12 million. And then the, in the $7 million, there is approximately $4 million in the, in BCJ construction support, and then there's another, what was it, another $3 million and some change for the project management that Driver did. So we can give you a breakdown on it if you'd like to see it.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes, we had a very impressive chart up there about how the total cost of the Civic Center project has come down over time. How much has the BCJ estimate come down over the course of this project since the initial estimate?
It's been pretty fixed at this amount. I know it's something that I watch, and Steve watches, and I get a little frustrated with it. However, I do talk with them extensively about it. We've been a pretty demanding group in terms of different design discussions and impacts throughout this process. It has been a five-year relationship. It will be at the end of the process. I don't know, Steve, if you want to comment further?
Yeah, the contract is a time of materials, and as Dave says, we have been fairly demanding in various scenarios and exploring ways to make the project better. But I will say there are some areas where we have not expended all of the money, and we don't anticipate expending all the money, especially in this construction support contract. We're hoping, I mean, this thing is really based upon a two-year program, one visit a week. Well, we really don't think that's going to be necessary, but we have it there in case it's needed. And if there's some issues, we don't want to have to come back, but we're going to do everything in our power to hold those costs down.
Is there a motion?
I move the recommended action.
Motion and second. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? All right, seeing none tonight, we're going to adjourn in the memory of someone who was a great friend, I think, to all of us up here, and that is Diane Coltrane, who passed away on October 22nd. Diane was born and raised in Long Beach, graduated from Poly High, and attended Long Beach City College and Long Beach State, where she took business and real estate courses. Diane went on to enjoy a long and successful career in real estate in the Long Beach area, and then later in Newport Beach. That really doesn't do it justice. I knew Diane in Long Beach back in the '70s. She was a leading Realtor in Long Beach. Coltrane and Company took up an entire city block on Naples. And she was someone who was a dynamic leader in that community, and later a dynamic leader in our community as well. She was actively involved here, having served on the Board of Directors for a host of charitable and business organizations. She was honored as one of the 18 outstanding women in California, Nevada, and Arizona for her personal business and community achievements. Diane, you saw around town. She was active at Speak Up Newport. You saw at the mayor's dinner, the fire appreciation event. She was literally all over town, serving the community. Diane is survived by her daughters, Kristy Peterson and Kathleen Dennis, son Michael Mullins, son-in-law Bucky Dennis, six grandchildren, and many friends. A memorial service will be held on Friday, November 19, at 2:00 p.m. in Mariners Church in Irvine in memory of Diane. We are adjourned.